Good evening. Welcome to the January 5th, 2022. Planning Board meeting for the town of Newbury as a preliminary matter. My name is Pete Pickles. I'm the Chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me please to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy.
Yes.
Thank you, Larry. George Morse. Not here. Okay, Leslie Matthews.
Here.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight? Thank you, Woody. Mayor Stone.
Yes.
Thank you. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Here.
Thank you. Emily Noble?
Here.
Thank you. Anticipated speakers or presenters on the agenda, please confirm in the affirmative. Is Mark DiPiero here this evening?
He's on the call.
Okay, great. Mark?
I'm here.
Thank you, Mark. I'm sorry, I just can't see people because I'm reading a script. Tom Z?
Here.
Great. Good evening. This is January 5th, 2020. The open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with the act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 order of suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until April 1st, 2022. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly physical accessible location allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely along as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can afford, can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 9292056099 and entering the media ID when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video in or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel on Zoom and at www.tnct.org. And the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to board members prior to meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information on the screen. Please state your intention after being called. So before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As the Chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I'll go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with the toggle six to mute it on you when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. We do not have any public hearings tonight. Let's see, for each vote taken in this meeting, we will be conducting by row and call and my coach, my vice chair will make sure that I do that. Okay, with that said, let's see, let's pull up our agenda and see what we have first. Okay, let's see, new business, so 105 Higher Road Performance Guarantee Review of Scheduled Values for the Tripartite Agreement. Okay, let me pop this down. I just want to pop something else back up. And, okay, so my thing, correct me if I speak incorrectly. From my understanding, we're now looking at the performance guarantee proposed for the value of the tripartite agreement for 105 High Road. In Joe's work, our peer review has reviewed the proposed schedule values, which was distributed to the board members, and he has deemed that the amount sufficient is sufficient for approval of the work. Is that correct?
That is correct. There was one addition that was made and is reflected on the copy that I sent to the board and that was adding a line item for preparation of as-built plan.
Okay, so let me minimize this. Do the board members have any questions on those, on those numbers that were shared? Larry, do you, sir?
I do not.
Okay, Leslie, do you?
No.
Okay, Woody, do you?
No, I don't know. I do not.
Okay, great. And Mary, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, if that's the case, then what we could do is we could, we could make a motion to accept the proposed values for the tripartite agreement. Now, again, Martha, correct me if I speak incorrectly. This value would then be used by the applicant. He could go to the bank and say, this is what would be anticipated, but this would not be in place of the, of the, of the agreement because it hasn't been finalized. Is that correct?
That's correct. There was a draft that was prepared by Mr. DiPiero's attorney, which Town Council Brian Winter has reviewed, but it has not been finalized. Okay, so until it's been finalized, presented to the board, the board votes on it. It gets signed and notarized and recorded at the registry. It is not in effect.
Okay, so we can't, we can't say go ahead with this as this validates the agreement because we don't have the agreement finalized. But what we can say is this value, which has been calculated, would be appropriate. So the performance guarantee value for the, for the work is appropriate. We can make an action on that tonight.
Right, right. So then that number will be reflected in the tripartite agreement. The schedule of values would be an attachment to that document.
Okay, that being the case, I would, if the board is comfortable with that, I would entertain a motion to accept the performance guarantee of proposed scheduled values for the agreement.
I'll move to accept the proposed schedule values.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
None.
Discussion, Mary?
No.
Okay, great. How do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, Woody?
Yes.
Thank you. And how do you feel about it, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, the Chair is in favor as well. Very good. So this information could then be facilitated in the manner that we just kind of outlined and then we still have to have the final agreement to come before the board.
Right, we'll need to get that.
Okay, great. Very good. Okay. Great. Let's see, let me pop up my agenda again, but I think it's going to be pretty simple. Let me do that and go over here. So our second order of business is going to be old business. And so we have a couple of things here. We have the 15 Coleman Road. First, we have the request for release of lot 1 and 8 for a performance covenant. Then we have the follow-up discussion regarding the draft of legal documents for Fieldstone Lane OSRD, including the Declaration of the Restrictive Covenants and Easements, Declaration on the Establishment of Fieldstone Lane and the Homos Association. Okay, so with that, let me see what notes I have here to, 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 to review. So if, if I remember correctly, Martha, we were waiting for the septic to be completed before we could release lots 1 and 8. And from my understanding, there is some ledge that turned up that needed to be blasted. And so the work for that is not completed. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Tom might be able to speak more, but my understanding is that as of yesterday, the mats blasting mats were in place. Survey's been done. They're waiting for the rig.
Okay, all right. Tom, do you have anything new to add to this piece of the discussion right now?
Just that, yeah, it's been a little frustrating, as everybody knows, getting work done. But we do have mats on site. I'm expecting a drill rig in the next couple of days. Surveys have been done beyond the requirements, just, you know, with an overabundance of caution to the neighborhood. And we're just waiting for that work to be done. Not much we can do about it other than, you know, maintain good relationships with everybody and, and hope that the work gets done quickly. So on that item, we're, we're, we're working at it as much as we can, but we don't control the calendar.
Understand. Okay, so then the second component was the draft documents for the covenants, restricted covenants and the HOA. Now, Martha, just, I just want to make sure that I'm correct on this as well. There's been documents that Brian has been working on and submitting. So just bring me up to speed so I understand and the board can understand correctly where we're at.
Right. So there was a first, first draft of documents that Brian had reviewed and annotated. And I think for the last, last meeting. And there was one outstanding portion of it, which was really the language related to what was going to happen to the Witch Stone. And at that meeting, everybody was in agreement that, that there will be a carved out area and it will be conveyed to the town. Comments had been submitted to Tom. Unfortunately, it appears that the, because of different programs being used, some marginal comments made by Brian about some discrepancies and questions regarding the documents actually didn't come through. Brian did send a second set of revisions today, which was distributed to the board and to Tom. And so that's, that's kind of where we are working on them. Tom and I had some dialogue regarding the documents and they still need to be finalized in written form.
Okay, Tom, I'm sorry. So we have documents that haven't been finalized, but it seems that we're getting close to that finish line.
Yeah, if I, if I could just elaborate on that, Peter, if you'll let me for just a moment. I mean, obviously, this was a priority again because of my using Apple products and the rest of the world using Microsoft. There was some, some items that I didn't see that I didn't get an opportunity really to, to look at earlier. It's unfortunate, but I did look at everything today. There's, there's not any issues on the documents. We're gonna, I'm having my attorney draft and adopt everything that Brian has, has commented on and a couple of minor sections, either deleting a sentence or, or modifying some of the verbiage to accommodate his, his requests. I don't think there's anything at issue. It's just I didn't have time today to have my attorney's office revise those documents for your review for tonight. But we'll get those to Martha as soon as we can, hopefully in the next couple of days and then, and then have them, have them ready. The, the only item that, and then maybe this is the other item, Martha, I don't know if you were gonna bring this up is the, is the, is the Witch Stone parcel and how, how I'd like to, I'd like to settle that so we can get that A and R plan produced and, and ready for signature. So I'll, I'll defer to you folks to at least start that conversation and I'll jump in when you need me to.
Okay, I'm gonna try to always call it the Father Stone. It just sounds.
Okay.
Okay, so I, just for any public that's listening. So we have two components that still have to have some work done, so we can't, we can't release the lots 1 and 8. The, the documents just need some last minute tweaking with attorneys. So we should have that and we should be able to conclude that. So the last piece is with cooperation, working to, to figure out the best manner to have that Father Stone protected by the town. So Martha, we had a kind of an image of what we're thinking of. Can you, can you screen share that just so we can kind of talk through that?
Um, yes, let me see. So this, this is, this is a draft A and R that, that Tom had sent previously. And I think there's been some discussion about what the area actually is. My, my understanding originally was that it was going to be 20 by 20. The A and R plan shows 10 by 20. So let me see if I can pull that up.
And is this the one that, that showed the 500 square feet? Is that, is that the one we're looking, gonna be looking at?
Uh, that's the second one. So let me pull up the A and R first.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So I've zoomed. Can you all see that?
Momentarily.
Yeah. Okay, so I've zoomed. The, the A and R actually includes the entire seven, seven lots, but I've zoomed in on the, where the Witch Stone is. And one request I've made of Tom is to actually identify on the plan where the stone is in relation, especially in relation to, you know, the radius of Fieldstone Lane and the, the stone wall and at the intersection with Coleman. Because I think we need to nail that down to make sure that we're actually carving out the, the correct area. So this is the, the original proposed A and R plan that Tom sent showing a 10 by 20 carve-out area.
Right.
One of the questions that came up, and I discussed this with Town Council, was that in order for town personnel to be able to get into this area to do any maintenance, it won't be possible, obviously, to take any heavy equipment right over the stone wall so that we would need an easement across Fieldstone Lane and, and across a portion of Lot 7, small portion, to get into this area. So Tom made a suggestion today that instead of doing an easement across Lot 7 to actually carve out a larger area. So I'm going to stop sharing this and pull up the, the other one, if I can find that. And that's it. If you can see it, so it would be a 500 square foot area that would intersect with Fieldstone Lane. I did discuss this with Town Council also, and he noted that even with this, we would still need as part of the deed to have the right to pass and repass over Fieldstone to get to that parcel, but.
Martha, if I could, I, I, I think, and I may be mistaken on this, but I, I think the town has, has all the rights to pass and repass over Fieldstone by virtue of the, the conditions of the permitting.
And that, I'm just, I had a brief conversation with, with Town Council about that. So we can, you know, we can work that out. I think the question right now is really what we're going to carve out for, for the area. And Tommy may be correct, but we'll, we'll confirm one way or the other.
So just for my application on the image that we see before us, Martha, we just need to identify where the Father Stone is in this diagram, because I'm not exactly sure if I know where it is.
Yeah, it hasn't, hasn't been identified here. My guess is it's probably right in around here, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it, it is, it is in the exact, in the exact center of that 20-foot measurement along the right of way along the lots in the exact center. I actually asked the, the surveyor to add, to add an arrow. It's too small to, to physically show it, but because we have to show all of the lots, but, but I, I asked him to put a leader arrow and, and a notation as to exactly where it was, which is, which is precisely in the center of that 20 feet.
So right, right in basically around here where my.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Well, I, this is great, Tom, and I, and I appreciate your, your cooperation in, in, in working with this and through this so that we can preserve this speech, piece of Newbury's history and heritage. It's great. Thank you. So I think we just now, now just have to, I think, have direction from the board as to what will be the final layout depiction for the A and R. Is that correct, Martha?
Yeah, some, yes, an agreement on what, what approach we're going to take here. And then I think, you know, perhaps a motion could be, you know, subject to finalizing the exact layout on the A and R.
So board members, I just want to find out what your thoughts are of this second proposal, which would be probably about 500 square foot, you know, give or take with the stone in the central area with access, which would not require an easement if all works well with a car vote from Lot 7. So let me just touch base. Larry, your thoughts, sir?
You know, I'm comfortable with it.
Beautiful. Okay, great. Leslie?
Seems appropriate, yes.
Beautiful. Woody?
I think it looks good.
Great. Mary?
Oh, it's 2020, right? Not 20.
Did I say 2020?
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's good.
200 square feet.
No, it's gonna be 500 square feet, Leslie.
Right, the whole thing, but 200 for the Woodstone parcel, right?
Well, five.
If I, if I could clarify that originally, A and R that was presented, which was just a draft, was 20 by, by 10, that was 200 square feet. Martha, you recalled that as being 20 by 20, so I didn't, doesn't really matter. I think it makes more sense actually in retrospect that 20 by 20 does, does make some sense. But that little triangle that, that extends over to Fieldstone Lane adds about another 100 square feet. So the 20 by 20 is 400 square feet, the little additional triangle, you know, that, that fronts along the curve, gets it to approximately 500 square feet. And I, I offered that just because it's, the fee is always a stronger ownership and, and has stronger rights than an easement. And I thought it would be simpler for everybody.
I appreciate that very much, Tom. Do you have any other concerns or thoughts?
Not really. I'm just, you know, thinking about the location of the Witch Stone, if it's actually in here, whether, I don't know, whether, whether this, this, this right-hand line should come over a little bit farther. It just kind of seems a little, a little tight in there, but I, I don't know. I'm just kind of.
Well, it's, it's exactly 10 feet from the stone.
This line is 10.
Exactly, precisely 10 feet from the center of the stone.
Yeah.
Um, that should be enough leeway, I think, for DPW to get in there and do the maintenance around that. Does that seem reasonable? No.
Hopefully so. I mean, if, yeah. You know.
What's the maintenance? Mowing and cleaning up and.
Yeah. Doing some mowing and, you know, hopefully, if there's any repair needed to the stone wall or something itself.
And I would, I would think, Tom, probably on, on, on both sides of, of, of the lane, that the stone wall maintenance and, you know, you know, clearing is going to be, so it's, you know, pristine in its appearance because it's going to be, you know, the gateway to your home. So it's, I think it's going to reflect very, very, very warmly at the area.
Yeah, I, you know, as, as I mentioned, I mean, once, once we conclude the, you know, the, the process, we'll, we'll, you know, pretty immediately build a, a stone wall along the pinned, the pinned boundaries of that so that it's, you know, very distinct and very clear. And we'll use, we won't use freshly turned stones from, from the earth. We'll use some of the old weathered stones that, that'll, that'll, that'll best mimic what's, what's already there.
Now, you have a plethora of beautiful stones in the, in the back area there. Yeah. Martha, did I interrupt your thought process?
No, 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 it's all set.
Okay, all right. If that's the, the case, then I would entertain a motion to accept this, this modified, proposed parcel car vote of the 500 square foot with the final details to be determined in the A and R for consideration. So.
Motion so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion, Larry?
No.
Great. Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
None.
Great. Discussion, Mary?
I'd just like to be sure that we get exactly where it is. That's all. I'm just curious.
Exactly where this, where the stone is located?
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll make sure we note that on the plan. As I said, I've already instructed the surveyor to, to, to add that regardless of the, of the specific car vote.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Ready to vote. Sir, Larry? How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
All right, and the Chair's in favor as well. Beautiful. Great, Tom. I appreciate that we're, we're getting close to the finish line. We just need to get the, some ledge blasted out of, you know, Ledge Town here and then just get the, the attorneys together for 45 minutes to do what they need to do and hopefully we'll, we'll be there.
Oh, I, I, I appreciate that and thank you all for tolerating my presence as much as you have through the last few months. And we'll see you again in a few weeks, hopefully, in, in some sort of a concluding fashion, at least for this portion.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you all.
All right. Wow, let's see. I'm gonna pop over here and pop up the agenda again. So, so now we're into our proposed zoning amendments for spring 2022 annual town meeting. So we have three components that we're talking about are, are two. The wireless communication and inclusionary bylaw. So Martha, let's just kind of do a summary of what our work groups have come up with, so we can talk about wireless first, I think.
Yeah, so wireless, I think, you know, the last time, well, the only time we met, we were all in agreement that it would be helpful to have our consultant come back in to work with us to see if there are any revisions needed to be done to our draft based on new technology, based on increased demand due to work from home and that kind of stuff. So I did reach out to him and he, he is very happy to come back and work with us and that's really part of the original scope. So he's prepared to meet with our working group if we can set up a date to do that. And I did find out what his availability is next week, or actually, he gave me the times that he's not available. So if we can work towards.
Is he not available?
So he is not available next Tuesday from 3 to 5 or next Wednesday from 10 to noon, Thursday 10 to noon or 3 to 5. So Thursday looks like a pretty full day for him and Friday 10 to noon is out for him.
Okay, so we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Is that right?
Yes.
I am not available.
Right, Les isn't available on Tuesday, so we should probably knock that one out.
Okay, so let's look at Monday. The 10.
Monday, the 10th might be a little tricky just because, well, if we did it tomorrow, we could do it. It needs to be posted.
Okay.
On Monday. The 10th, I can't, I'll be in Boston all day.
Okay.
Okay, so we're now honing in on Wednesday, the 12th. And what times were the unavailable time? Was it 11 to 2?
No, it was 10 to noon. He was unavailable. So we could either do it before 10 or afternoon.
How does Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday, the 12th, let's say 1 o'clock?
Um, so again, I will be in Boston on the 12th. However, you need to proceed. So do what's best for you guys, but I will be in Boston Monday and 12.
Okay.
And actually, unfortunately, I have a webinar on MBTA communities, which I will be talking about in a minute from 1 to 2 on Wednesday.
Do we want to try 2:30?
That would be fine with me.
Okay, let me go around and see how things look. Larry, how does 2:30 look for you, sir?
I'm not in the group.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Don't you want to join us?
Oh, it's always a pleasure, but.
But if you change your mind.
Okay, okay, if you change. I know it's an open meeting, so.
Yep, yep. Leslie, does that work?
Yes.
Okay, Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, you, you won't be able to.
Oh, no.
And Martha, that works for you.
That works for me.
So let's go for Wednesday, the, the 12th at 2:30. Do we want to have a backup just in case that doesn't work?
Uh, probably wise.
Okay, so then that, that throws us back into Monday. Is that correct?
Unless we want to try.
Friday?
And we could try, we could try Thursday also, you know, say at 1 o'clock or something like that. Because he's, he's tied up from 10 to noon and 3 to 5.
Thursday, the 13th at 1 PM. Leslie, how does that, for a second, that works. Woody?
Yes, that works for me.
And Mary, that would work for you, right?
Indeed.
So do we want to, do we want to make that our primary?
Yes.
Let's make that our first choice and our second choice would be the 12th. Good.
That's, that's great. I didn't want to miss that conversation.
But good, good. I want you in that conversation.
An update on this, pulling the present.
And Larry, in case you change your mind. And Larry, in case you change your mind.
Okay.
Good. So that's that's why. And I'm I'm tickled that the consultant is is willing to come back to speak with us as part of his original contract, that's that's wonderful.
Yeah, no.
We all agree.
He does have some things that he wants the board to think about, so I'll see if we can either, you know, formulate those as questions ahead of time. Or else he will probably, you know, just as we kick off the meeting, go go through those.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good idea, recap at the beginning.
Right, and I'll probably resend what I sent the last time, which was both his markup and the clean version of the draft that we had before. Because, you know, he said the markup with all of his comments in the margins really kind of. Lay out the thinking of of. How we got from where we are to or where we were before to where he's proposing we go. But there's some some broader questions as well that he suggested we think about.
Okay, very good.
Sounds good.
All right.
So.
The primary meeting is on Thursday at one thirty, right?
Yes.
Thursday at one. One, one o'clock.
One, one o'clock, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so I'll reach out to him first thing tomorrow and confirm that that will work for him.
And that'll be virtual or?
It'll be virtual, yes, yeah.
I think we're going to be continuing everything in virtual for a while, Leslie.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, with regards to our second work group, the inclusionary bylaw.
Don't really have much new on that, I think. You know, the big, big question still is sort of how how we structure this, given that we don't have a housing authority and we don't have. You know, we don't have a affordable housing trust, there is. There is somebody who's been reaching out to various communities, he reached out to Ipswich. I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe he's with a nonprofit affordable housing developer. Who is interested in talking to communities about affordable housing, and maybe that would be a starting place to have him. See if we could either talk to our group or talk to the entire board.
Okay, we're going to be looking, we were looking at. We had that matrix that Emily had made up.
Yes.
And were we looking at any, were we drilling down into that information, I forgot where how we left that conversation.
Do a comparison with West Newbury or Grovan?
Yeah, we we looked at. Okay, so we looked at a a a communities that were similar, and Emily, are you on today, tonight?
Yep, she's here.
Beautiful.
She's muted, but she's here.
Emily?
Yes, I'm here, sorry.
All right, hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
All right, so we we had that the that breakdown of the comparable. Communities and communities that were a little bit different, so we were looking at the different configurations, and we didn't really leave our discussion, just refresh this old, old mind of mine.
I mean, I don't, I don't know that we, like, you know, there was really anything that we were. Like, looking at for the next meeting sort of thing, I know we had talked about. Just sort of looking at possibly our our number, our trigger number being four. And possibly twenty five percent. Of, like, you know, like, if someone wanted to do a development of four, that is, that was something you had just proposed, but I don't know that we would, there was like anything that we were. Kind of working on for next time.
So I think, you know, if we can kind of, you know. Have the have the work group talk through this a little bit more, so that we can have a recommendation, and maybe, Martha, if we could see if this individual. Is available to speak with us, and were we going to be doing any discussion with our council to give us any guidance?
Um, yes, I was going to reach out to to. Both Lisa and Brian to see if they had any any sort of models that they would point us to, I think also. Doing a search, and I may be wrong, there really don't seem to be many communities that are doing inclusionary that don't have. A housing trust and a housing authority. Even West Newbury does, so.
Yeah, I think that was the discussion about West Newbury is to go and kind of like a fact finding mission with them to get an idea of how they put that together.
Conversation with them, yeah.
I I took a look at the at all of the communities that that Emily came up with, and the one thing they all have in common is a housing authority. Something that that we're lacking, obviously. Frankly, I don't know if if a trust works in the absence of a housing authority or not, and. That individual you mentioned, Martha, might be a great. A great resource for us. What what's kind of puzzling me is if you look at the model bylaw. There are really four forms of of. What's the word I'm looking for? Of. There's four ways that a developer can meet the requirements of the model bylaw. One is is to construct a certain percentage of units on site or at another location. The other is a payment in in lieu of that, which would go into the trust or to the housing authority, however it it's best. However, it's best set up, or a donation of land for affordable housing. I don't know in those last two how we would manage those in the absence of a housing authority. And that would really just leave the really the one option of setting aside a percentage of the of the units as affordable. Which I I doubt in many cases would be very. Attractive to a developer, maybe there are some scenarios where it would be, but I guess. This is a long way of saying, without a housing authority or a trust in place, we're really limiting the options that we can offer.
Right, right.
By law.
Great, thanks, Larry.
And we did, we did have the discussion about the fact that, you know, somebody's doing a market rate housing development and. You know, building an affordable unit in there, how, you know, how to make that comparable and.
Right, right, that's. That's an issue, and, you know. So. Anyway, those, I I think that individual you spoke about, Martha, would be an excellent. Resource for us.
Yeah, it it sounds like it, I will find out a little bit more. If he hasn't contacted us directly, but as I said, he has contacted Ipswich, so I will. Find out more back, and then we can see whether he might be able to meet with the whole board, or. You know, what might be an appropriate form.
Give us some suggestions on how to proceed.
Yeah.
And see if council has any recommendations, so those two things.
Absolutely.
We can work on, and if that that information comes to fruition between now and our next meeting. And we set a date for our for our work group to meet, we can just post it appropriately, I think that works. Okay, wonderful, wonderful, um, great, let me. I keep on popping between screens here, because I didn't set this up quite ideally. Is there anything else that we want to think about for potential for the spring meeting, Martha?
Um, you know, given our schedule and the fact that we've got to actually make a recommendation to the select board in the beginning of February. I think it's a little little tough, there's one thing I might have mentioned this last time that I do need to follow up on, which is a. A requirement, actually, to update our flood plain. Bylaw, our overlay district bylaw, so I'm looking into that now to see if that's something, I think it was. For communities with bylaws in place that were not expecting map revisions, it was supposed to be done at the community's earliest convenience. So. I need to find out a little bit more about that to see if we need to aim for spring town meeting on that one.
Okay, um. Let me continue then on our agenda, let me read our planning board financial report for December twenty twenty one. Payroll and invoices authorized, number one payroll warrants for planning director and planning administrator. P R twenty two dash twelve for pay period ending twelve four twenty one and P R twenty two dash thirteen for pay period ending twelve eighteen. Two thousand twenty one, planning board expense of Verizon wireless. Planning board iPad or twelve, twenty nine, twenty one. Um, let's go into the planners' report.
All right, um, so a couple of things, I just want to remind everybody that we do have the sidewalk at the solar tomorrow. At high noon, so I'll meet you all at the gate on seventy five Boston Road. And open that up, we will at least have. Steve from Weston and Sampson there, and Eric McLean from. From A Solar cannot be, but I think one of his engineers, Porey, will be there, he's been out to the site a number of times. The fire department is going to join us, and. James Saret May, if he's available.
Okay, great.
So. And the second reminder, we do have two two public hearings at our next meeting, one continued hearing on the solar, and the second will be the opening of the. Honor's Academy, Presby. So Joe has started his review of that, as soon as I have comments, I will provide them. So the other thing I wanted to report on tonight. Since we've received, the town has received a notification letter about this is multifamily zoning requirement for MBTA communities. So last January, the legislature enacted a. A new section three of master general law, the zoning act, requiring that an MBTA community have at least one zoning district of reasonable, I'm reading here. A reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right and meets other criteria. Including the minimum gross density of fifteen acres, fifteen units per acre. Not more than half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, bus station, for us, it's the commuter rail. And we are an MBTA community because we have a border within half a mile of a commuter rail station. Can't have any age restrictions, and it needs to be suitable for families with children. So there's nothing, nothing that we need to do right now. But both NVPC has offered guidance, town council has offered guidance, and. Mass housing also provides some technical assistance on this. So we will need to submit. Well, there are some guidelines, preliminary guidelines that have been published, and D H C D is looking for. Public comment by March thirtieth, thirty first. So I'm going to put those up on the website, I can also distribute those to you all separately, if you would like me to do that, so that you've got them. At hand, and maybe we could put this on our next agenda to discuss. Final guidelines will come out of any public comment that's received on these things, and will be coming out sometime over the summer. So depending on what those are, I think the earliest that we could be looking at, you know, putting some zoning in place would be. Probably the fall town meeting, if. The zoning, basically, if we don't enact the zoning, then we won't be eligible for certain grant opportunities such as housing choice and mass works and a couple of other ones. So, you know, that's the, that's the incentive. And we will need to. In twenty twenty two, the compliance requirement is that we submit an MBTA community information form. By five P M on May second, twenty twenty two, and we have to brief the select board on the draft compliance guidance, no later than May second, twenty twenty two. And attest to that in our community information form. So those, so those are the two things that we need to do right away, is review the draft guidelines, see if we have any comments, and then. We'll do the briefing for the select board and submit the community information form.
Well, you know, this is actually kind of encouraging, Martha, because it's giving us additional direction to try to, you know. Get define some more affordable multifamily housing with within our community, which we are severely lacking, so. There's another. Helpful incentive to help us move in that direction.
No, I think so, I mean, it's something that we've been thinking about, this would allow multifamily housing by right. As you recall, we allow it by special permit, they have a green business district and a byfield village business district, but only up to four, so that's nowhere near this this kind of density. It would still be subject to site plan review, so even though it doesn't require a special permit, it would be by right, we would still have the opportunity for site site plan review on these things. I think the challenge for us is going to be. The area around the train station. You know, some of it's in agricultural preservation restrictions, so it's not available for development, and there are a fair number of wetland resources there. So I think that's one, one area where NVPC might be really helpful for us, is just kind of mapping it and identifying.
Are they? If you know, does the entire district have to be within a half mile of the train station?
Um.
Because we're pretty, we're pretty limited on.
Yeah, no, we we are pretty limited on that, and. That. I mean, the guidance here from the state, basically, it says not more than a half mile from a commuter rail station. So, yeah, we're gonna have to look at it.
That across the board for every single one?
For every community, yeah. And it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, it can be parcels that are already developed, and we do have. Bashaw parcel, which has the solar system on it now, doesn't mean that it's already developed, it doesn't need to be redeveloped for this, but it just needs to be designated.
Repurposed?
So that in the future, it could be potentially be redeveloped for multifamily, but it doesn't need to be available for that right now.
I guess my, I guess I'm confused it. It has to be within half a mile of. The transportation, but what about other areas where they want? Where they want affordable housing? Does that eliminate them as possibility, because they're not a half a mile or something?
Uh, no, I mean, this is a, this is, this is a specific requirement for the area around the commuter rail, it doesn't, doesn't rule out. Doing it areas.
Yeah, it's an obvious thing, but I would just want to be sure. Okay, good.
It's just, it would be required to be by right in this particular district.
I should probably know this, but what is the percentage we have now in New York?
Um, well, this is, yeah, I mean, this isn't necessarily even for affordable housing, it's for multifamily housing.
Right.
But our percentage of affordable housing is only three point five.
Okay, that was what I meant, okay, thank you.
And we're required to have ten percent.
Right.
And we have very, the only. The only real multifamily housing we have are the elderly housing units, the two in Byfield and one on Old Town. And condos where the Woodbridge School, which is a whole different, you know, different.
Affordable, so three point five, we have to get to ten somehow?
To ten.
And when do we have to do that?
Um, well, there's no deadline on on getting to ten, but as long as.
If if you get to ten, you're exempted from the from forty B P R, is what it what it is.
Right.
So in other words, an applicant can come in with a forty B application. Unless your community has at least ten percent affordable housing.
Okay. Thanks, Larry.
So this was based around the incentive from the state to really encourage. People living near commuter rails and having housing afford, having housing also near that resource, so that we could rely more on public transportation.
Right.
Kind of all of that.
Right.
Right.
And and increasing, increasing. You know, the amount of housing in general by having much higher density.
Well, let's keep our fingers crossed, and maybe this will start to open some doors and get some state involvement to help communities that are, you know, that have infrastructure such as our community and are, you know, we're kind of a unique. Community, we have space, we have land, but we have limitations on what we can do with that.
Yeah.
Very interesting, okay, anything else, Martha?
No, that's it.
Okay, let's move on to liaison reports, want to start off with the Z B A, Larry?
Uh, yeah, um, I am, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, but I I think Martha. Reported on the Pink House, and I guess we'll be seeing that very shortly in the form of an A and R. If you recall, a couple of meetings ago. We discussed the possibility of a joint meeting with the Z B A to address some of the concerns they've been having and interpreting the. Plum Island Overlay District and 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 some improvements they might want to see, or some changes. They might want to see to the bylaw, and I raised that issue with them, and it was very well received, and I think they'd like to proceed in that in that fashion. So the way. So the way it was left is they were going, I think it was Eric was going to come up with a list of, of issues that they run into on a regular basis and then set up a joint meeting with this board so we could discuss those and discuss the, the process of proposing bylaw amendments to deal with those ambiguities in the PIOD. We're not looking at the spring meeting. I'll recognize that was a little too soon. So hopefully something for the fall meeting.
Wonderful. Larry, I think this is something you want to do and you can be the, the, you know, the greasy wheel, I mean, the squeaky wheel to make sure that we get the process done. So great.
No, it was very well received and I think they welcomed the opportunity to
Perfect.
collaborate with us.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. And so I guess Martha, you might, you might be getting some potential dates once there's some topics for agenda items and just circulate those dates and we'll, we'll just make that happen. That'd be wonderful. Perfect. Thank you. Anything else, Larry?
No.
Okay, Leslie, select board.
Select board meeting. Not really too much to report on except for a $75,000 donation. It comes from, oh gosh, I have misplaced my notes. Martha, do you remember the?
I actually wasn't at the last meeting, so.
Yeah, I, I watched it and then I reviewed it again. But it goes, it'll go to the library. We're not really sure. We don't have a really good historical background on how this all works, but to get some information on that.
Okay, so.
New business licenses.
All right, $75,000, come in and go to the library, is that right? $75,000.
$75,000.
That's great.
And it's, this is an organization that has made considerable contributions to different most of nonprofits in Newbury and surrounding communities.
Wonderful.
So, the name, the name of the organization is? I've misplaced my notes, Mary, and I can't.
Well, that's okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Oh, it's okay.
But I would assume nonprofit 501(c)(3).
Usually goes to nonprofit, but it's, this one is going directly to the library to use as they see what's really needed.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure the physical building itself probably has some issues because it's a few years old now. Yeah. See what new programs can, wonderful, excellent. Conservation, conservation meant yesterday or last night of interest on similar paths, governors, they had a minor modification and there was some discussion, but since basically the modification was accepted, the concerns, Martha, I think were more of, you know, Joe's, you know, oversight, you know, stormwater, some commissioners had some concerns with regards to some of those issues. And so I kind of indicated that falling under the actual site development with our engineer as a peer review being involved in the process. So, but it was, it was good. That was the major component. It was actually a pretty short meeting last night, which was nice. Conservation. Good, let's see, NVPC.
So the commissioners met on December 16th. Most of the meeting really was focused on updates from from their various, you know, department directors, just, you know, a ton of work going on as usual. Gerard did say he was going to have, be having a meeting with DHCD regarding this MBTA communities, which he did. He provided some guidance for us. Came to us yesterday. Will be the topic of the planners' meeting later this month. And he also provided a link to a webinar that DHCD is holding next Wednesday. I assume that's open to anybody, so I'll send that link to you as well. You'll have to register for it. If you want to hear what they have to say, so I'll send that along with the guidelines. And the, they often have a special presentation. This one was given by Jim Turlisi, who was one of their transportation guys about road safety audits. So that was, that was at the planners' meetings, a mention will be later this week, later this month.
All right. Very good. Um, let's move in 10 minutes. Oh, my goodness, Emily. Wow, so one, if everybody had an opportunity to view the two sets of minutes, one was for 120, 21 is 10 pages of minutes, which covered a number of topics. Did everyone have an opportunity to review those minutes?
Just getting through them.
Are there any comments?
I, I do have one very minor one.
Thank you, Larry.
You know, on the second to the last page, under item G, the second paragraph, the, it says Al Murphy said that in preparing his draft, he looked at the select board's deadlines, been Newbury and North Andover. Actually, that should be Andover, and I only have a very clear memory of that because I used to work for Andover. I know I didn't go to North Andover, so. Other than that, it looks fine to me.
We can make that correction, very good.
I, I have to, I have to be loyal to my former employer, so.
It's, it's, it's appropriate, Larry. We're not going to tell anybody anything different. Wonderful. Any other comments on the minutes for the 20th? Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
As amended.
As amended, thank you, Martha. No north, just.
Just no north. I'll move approval as amended.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Discussion on a motion, discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, Leslie? Discussion, Woody?
No.
Discussion, Mary?
No.
Great, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Leslie. Woody, how do you?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Okay, and the chairs in favor as well, beautiful. And then the other set of minutes is is yes, February 3rd, and we have a total of 15 pages, I think. Did everyone have an opportunity to take a look at those minutes?
Yes, I did, but I didn't.
Any comments or additions or deletions?
Me again.
North, okay, go ahead, Mr. North.
No, that's, if you look at page two.
Yes.
Under C, the heading Public Hearings, Site Plan Review Application, two and eight hour old Point Road, map UO2 lots 154 and 154.
Yep.
Is there a duplication there or something I don't understand? I didn't have time to actually look up the, the.
Yeah, no, I think they are two different lot, lot numbers, whatever.
So we will make that correction for the appropriate lot number.
I, I think the same error appears on page nine as well.
Yep.
I don't know what the right numbers are.
Okay.
It seems redundant.
We can, we can address that, okay. With those two corrections to be made, are there any other concerns with the set of minutes? I don't think I said that the building looked that way, but that's okay. I'm just kidding. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Leslie. Is there a second?
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. Okay, there's a second. Discussion on the motion, discussion, Larry?
No.
Okay, discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
None.
Discussion, Mary? Great, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary, how do you feel? Okay, and the chairs in favor as well. Emily, thank you so much for doing those. I know that a lot of energy and effort went into that. Perhaps the longest sets of minutes I, I've seen for a meeting for this board. Am I correct, Martha?
Well, there, there are some longer ones. I just haven't.
There's ones that are longer.
Okay, well, that's okay.
But you haven't seen them yet, maybe.
Oh, we're looking forward to that. All right.
These were, these were very detailed and very well done.
Yeah, and I think that most people who are in the audience don't understand the amount of work that goes into developing and transcribing and getting those minutes printed up and sent out. And any delays are due to absolute priorities and time. So Emily, thank you for all you do. It is very hard to do this.
Mary, I, I, I appreciate that comment and I, and I, I, I stand strong with you and also supporting that. It's, it's a lot of work. It might seem like it's very simple, but we have a limited amount of staff. We have a lot going on with our, our department, so I'm, I'm happy that you've made that statement. Thank you, Mary. Okay, do we have anything else to discuss this evening? I don't see anything else on the agenda. Martha, is there anything else that was added? Okay, great. That being the case, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Well, thank you, Larry. Discussion on the motion, Larry?
No discussion.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
None.
Mary, discussion. Okay, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. Yeah. Thank you, Woody. Mary, how do you feel about that?
Yes, 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 yes.
I also would also support, support that. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Martha, and thank you for anyone joining us from the community. Have a good.
Thanks, guys.